Let's call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask if there's anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, if you'd please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Do we have any special recognitions this evening, Dr. Brunel?
We do not.
Any citizens to comment? Seeing none, I do see a student representative, Ally.
No, I didn't hear anything from Erin, so this is all coming from me. This Saturday, We the People, Mr. Kennard and Mr. Benantio's government-affiliated activity had their state competition on Saturday at the Edward M. Kennedy Institute for the U.S. Senate in Boston. And I was a part of that, and it was very fun. And all the hard work we've been doing since, I think, before Christmas, all came together, and it was great to see the seniors kind of collaborate, because a lot of times, you know, the girls go their own way, the boys go their own way, but we were all mixed together, and it was just really fun to see the teamwork that was represented there. Unit four won the best unit, which means they, you know, answered the questions really fairly, and it was really good. The people who were on that were Megan Shogren, she was the captain, Grace Birigard, Alex Roy, Angelina DeCarlo, Izzy LaValle, Ethan Leonard, and Emma Crowley. As a whole, we won third place out of five other schools that were there, so we placed, and we were really happy about that. I actually won the Claudette M. L. DeRosiers Award for exemplifying the greatest civic virtue and selfless dedication to my class. That's what it says on the little plaque.
Congratulations!
Thank you. Mr. Kennard had everybody post a, like a poll-type of thing on Google Classroom, and they voted for me, so that was nice to the school.
Although I don't think any of us are surprised.
I do. Overall, it was a fantastic day and great turnout, because a lot of parents and teachers came to support, too. More parents than anything, they came and watched, it was nice. And Dr. Brunel came, too, and Mr. Handfield. February 14th, we're gonna go back to the EMKI to participate in the exhibits they have, so that'll be interesting. February 5th, the National Honor Society is finally taking their trip to Boston. We usually do it right before Christmas with the Christmas tree and everything, but we had a really big snow day, so we didn't get to go. So, that's the 5th next week. And finally, the week before February break, Student Council is doing a school-wide Kahoot game, so like, questions based on, like, you know, teachers or events at school. I don't know what it is exactly yet, but the whole school's gonna meet in the auditorium and, I guess, play a game. And then another time that week, for Spirit Week, Mr. Auburn, the senior boys' show they do every year, they're gonna do a little teaser for us, so. That's what's going on at Auburn High School.
Excellent. Thank you for that report. Any comments?
Just sounds like a fun place to be.
I saw some postings about the competition, and you guys came in third, and, yeah, it just always makes us very proud. I'm sure everyone saw those postings. It's great to see. But we're glad that you received the additional award.
Thank you.
As Mrs. McCrilla said, it's definitely deserved.
Thank you very much.
We love having you onboard.
Thank you.
Thank you for that report.
Thank you very much.
You're free to leave if you have things to do.
Thank you, I have karate next door, so. My cocks!
I also saw you doing some karate on a police officer, Ally. What was that?
Yes, oh, I forgot to say that! A Korean woman had a self-defense seminar-type thing where two police officers, I think Lombardi, Officer Lombardi and Officer Kennedy, came, and they just taught some basic things. But me and another girl, Leila Samia, she knows martial arts as well, and they kind of, like, ooh, kick on you. It was really fun.
I bet it was!
Glad I bring that up. Thank you, take care. She's something.
Her eyes just tell it all.
I would now seek approval of the minutes of January 8 and January 21. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Can we now move on to the superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we have here this evening some members of the Primary Configuration Team, and we've prepared a brief presentation for you. So, with your permission, I'm gonna have Dr. Chamberlain go down to lead it, and while she's doing that, I just wanna give recognition to those who are on this team donating their time. So, we had Claudia Elaine, who is here with us tonight, preschool teacher. Julie Benoit is a reading teacher, also here tonight. Beth Chamberlain, I've mentioned. Heather Harriman is a team chair at our primary level. Amy Kennedy is a parent. Marie Mahan is principal of Bryn Mawr, and she is here. As is Rosemary Reedy, our director of pupil services, also here. Sarah Schofield is a kindergarten teacher at Bryn Mawr. Jen Stanek, principal at the Pakicog School, is here, and myself. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Chamberlain, who will do this brief presentation.
Thank you, everyone. Happy to be here tonight. And once again, to start a presentation that ends with the word "team," which I think is a common theme around what gets presented here to all of you and to the town and whoever may be watching. So, just to give a little background, the focus of this committee is always around, and usually, everything we present is around equity and support of our students. And that was the reason to create this team. As you know, that sometimes in K-2, our class sizes fluctuate between Pakicog and Bryn Mawr School, and that can create an issue with the support we're able to provide to students. At this time, most special education students, or those with significant special needs, are primarily housed at Bryn Mawr School, which is great, but as we have students from both sides of town, right, we wanted to kind of take a look at that. And right now, our preschool is in two different locations, with two classes at Pakicog and three located at Auburn High School. So, we felt like some of these things were worthy of having a team take a look at, to see if we were best meeting the needs of our students in the current structure. So, again, the purpose of this team was really related to equitable services for all students, which ties directly to the strategic plan that's been designed by you and many members of the community, looking at creating equitable class sizes, equitable delivery of special education services, and a more cohesive preschool unit, rather than having them split into two locations. So, we had members of the team represented from each of these areas, and also included here is a letter that Dr. Brunel sent out to the larger community, looking for folks who were interested in talking about this really important initiative. So, the questions that were used as guiding questions for the teamwork should everything stay as it is? Should K-2 remain in the preschool program in the structure that they currently reside? Or is there a different configuration that would allow for more equitable delivery of services for those of our students in pre-K-2? So, with any good team in the Auburn Public Schools, it revolves around data, and some of the data initially collected were really from the team members, preschool, Bryn Mawr, and Pakicog teams, along with some from families, around some of both the potential positive things that might come out of reconfiguring how these were set up, and some of the drawbacks that might come from that. And we had chart paper all around this room, where we kind of put those all up and tried to categorize those and make some sense out of them for the team as we kind of worked through what's the best scenario. And what was the outcome of that first meeting was that we needed more data, because what we had wasn't quite enough. So, from there, we had to look at, well, if we wanted to reorganize, did we have space at Pakicog and Bryn Mawr to do that? If we wanted to kind of bring all of first grade together, all of kindergarten together? And that was tight to look at. So, by really looking at building plans, it looked like that could be a little bit difficult to really have everybody still have, you know, appropriate-sized classrooms and all of those things. So, that was already kind of a, little bit of a glitch we came along. Did we have space to allow special education students to attend their neighborhood school? There seemed to be a bit more flexibility around that, and I'll talk a little bit more about that when I get to kind of what we've decided with our findings, but it did seem that we could make that work so that kids could be in their neighborhood schools. The next question was around creating one preschool location to allow for a more cohesive unit, to have all of our preschool classes together. And this required a lot of kind of collaboration with the folks at the high school, because it easily kind of came to the surface that perhaps they could all fit at the high school. But by doing that, it required that we move, rise, and evolve to another location at the high school, which, investigating some of those things and taking walks around the high school, it seemed that there was an appropriate-sized, very large classroom, up in 3020, I believe it is, upstairs. There was also the opportunity near that room for the installation of a bathroom, which I know Dr. Brunel recently took to the town meeting, around using some CIP funds for that. And it really is a lovely space. And what it also does for Rising Evolved is integrates them more fully into the preschool, into the high school culture and climate in school, rather than having them downstairs. So, that kind of worked out. It was a lot of moving pieces, and there were a lot of dominos that kind of had to be looked at, but it did seem that we could make room for the entire preschool to be together, which allows for the sharing of staff, service delivery becomes better, transportation is a little bit better, satellite, this, right now, we take our satellite kids from the high school and bring them to Pakicog. At the end of the day, our preschool kids, this will allow them to all be together. So, there were a lot of positives that came out of that. We also looked at Route 12. Route 12 has been the historical dividing line, and so I did a little dot chart, was putting kids where they all lived, so we could really get a visual representation of where our students are. And it was really interesting to look at a map with where Pakicog is, where Bryn Mawr is, and if you look at kids down near Prospect Area going all the way up to Pakicog School, it seems like there might be a little bit of consideration that we could give there, even though it really still looks like the best dividing line. But I'll talk a little bit about that. There may be some room, and a few exceptions, if we had to, to make classes equitable, there's some room for that. So, I'll talk about that in a minute. So, what were our findings? That primarily, the K-2 configuration should not change, leaving the neighborhood schools at Pakicog and Bryn Mawr School. However, looking to have some flexibility with the assignment of some kids who may be right now on the Bryn Mawr side of town, but are much closer to Pakicog, if the need were to arise. And in our conversations, we really grappled with that a bit. It could be, you know, one or two students at some point in time down the road, or it may never happen that we have to kind of go across that line, even though already we make some exceptions for kids for a variety of reasons. So, we're gonna look at that as being a little bit flexible, but primarily what we're going to use to guide our decisions. Currently, we have two substantially separate classrooms housed at Bryn Mawr School, and we feel like we could move one to Pakicog and leave one at Bryn Mawr School. It would not require, it would just be a reassignment of current staff, yet would allow that opportunity for kids to attend their neighborhood school. It would spread those services out, and really, it adds a lot to the climate in a really positive way to schools, and we feel like that should be in both places. So, again, one finding that we were actually pleased to kind of come up with. Again, that all preschool classrooms should be housed at Auburn Public, I mean, at Auburn High School, allowing for that more cohesive team, the sharing of discussions around curriculum, the more frequent ability to meet with one another, to collaborate with one another. Right now, we use those kind of Tuesday faculty meetings to bring them together, which works out well, but everyone else has, you know, almost their whole group of teachers together, so we're really excited about that. And again, that Route 12 should primarily remain that dividing line of the town to determine what school a child will attend, but whether, if a child is much closer to one school and we feel like class sizes warrant it, we may look to collaborate with families to say, you know, can we make this work? We also have to consider, we would still want to make transportation available to any family, so we would have to take that into consideration, but we really think that this will be an unusual circumstance, not typically one that would happen for a large number of students or on a regular basis. So, those are all of our findings, and we put a quote in, we cannot become what we need to be by remaining what we are. We know that change is always hard, and I think this particular one caused a bit of angst for staff and for some of our families, but at the heart of it, and as I think the district always displays, we're always doing this with the good of our students at heart, with a lot of consideration to change that might impact our staff. So, we feel like the recommendations are sound, that they allow for us to provide more equitable services for students, which was really the driving force behind this committee, and we hope that you and the community are in support of those changes. And not to be remiss, but we just do want to thank again all the folks that participated, because it really was a very thoughtful group of folks that went into this wanting to do right by kids.
And I want to make sure to add Mrs. McCrilla's name to that. I'm sorry it didn't make it into the superintendent's memo, but it's up here. Megan was a contributing member of this team, too.
Yes. Any questions? I or any member of the committee, of the team would be happy to answer anything you might have.
So, at Pakicog, where would the substantially separate classroom be?
That would probably take the space where the current preschool classroom is.
Okay.
So, again, it's a really appropriate area for a classroom like that, and right now there are two classrooms there, so it would even allow for some sensory area to be built, as well as an area for discreet trials, if they utilize both of those classrooms.
Okay.
So, it's really the perfect spot for it.
And then after K-2, these groups would then move to Swiss?
Yeah. And they place... Yeah, and Swiss has a great space, that they really worked on this past year, last year, I think. A very large space with a sensory area, room for the trials, there's some separate rooms that they use for that, so they're well-equipped to receive the students. And again, our students' population isn't really changing, we're just relocating them a bit to kind of spread that out.
Sure. And my other question would be, and I think we've discussed this before, that if there are any changes that affect particular children, their families will be fully involved in any of this information, and their input would be included in what the decisions would be.
So, through the chair, for what our intention would be is once, we're gonna do preschool and kindergarten registration on February 6th, so everyone will register, they'll, we'll then sit behind the scenes and actually divide them up using Route 12. In some years, honestly, they're almost identical. So, any changes that we might propose would be with personal phone calls or meetings with families, absolutely.
Excellent.
Yep. And our goal, if we were to make any changes, I think eventually it would become a very natural progression, but in this first year, we'd also want to look at siblings. So, we wouldn't want to split siblings. If there was a sibling already, you know, at one school, we wouldn't want to move them, unless the parents wanted to do so.
Sure.
But it would be unusual, so absolutely involved.
Okay, sounds excellent, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I actually just have one question about the after-school care. You mentioned that some of the kids were getting busted. How is that gonna change with this configuration, just having all the preschool kids?
Well, so, some of the preschool students from the high school are brought up to Pakicog School, because we, there were only a few children at the high school, so it didn't make sense to have its own program at the high school with four or five students. So, they join the preschool kids up at Pakicog right now. Once they're all together, the preschool satellite program would stay at Auburn High School. So, there wouldn't be that need to do that.
Perfect.
Because we then believe that we will have a robust program that altogether they would be able to be together.
Very, thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one more.
Oh, sorry.
I was gonna say, and then for high school students that are thinking of exploring early childhood education, this is a perfect opportunity for them to explore that, see if this is the way they want to go, or run away and say, "Never again."
And Mrs. Elaine, I think, can say, right, you really benefit from...
They're definitely an asset to the program, and I think the two students, the two classrooms that are coming up, they will really benefit from that. It's great to have them in there.
Awesome.
For our students, as well as them.
Okay, that does sound terrific.
Jesse?
Through the chair, just to comment, I think it's a win-win all around, and I'm thrilled to see the preschoolers under one roof. I think it's been one of our missions all along, it's just how do we do it? And so, this is great. Any scuttlebutt from the staff members? Is everyone onboard with it, or has there been any...
Yes, I happened to be at Bryn Mawr today, so, you know, much of this, we had to kind of keep under wraps until we kind of rolled things out. Everyone is, from the folks I talked to today, are super positive about the, how this has all kind of played out. I think the initial angst was that it was going to be a very big disruption, and that was never the intention. It was just about giving kids what they needed, you know? But all intents that I've heard from them, very, very positive about the changes.
Great.
Yeah.
And through the chair, I can tell you from the first meeting, the teachers, the principals, they talked to all their staff. They came with lists. It was wonderful to see that teamwork and collaboration, so even though there were teachers that maybe weren't on the committee, or parents even that weren't on the committee, we heard everything, which was wonderful.
That's good. Transparency is the way to go with something like this, just to keep everyone on the same page.
And I have one last question. I'm thinking of our tours at the high school, and when you go down by the music room, there's the preschool classes. Where would the other preschool classes be located?
So, on the same floor, down at the other end, on the other side of the cafeteria.
Okay.
So, our first floor.
So, you decide at the cafeteria, then?
Yes.
So, the bandroom stays?
The bandroom stays as the bandroom, yes. That's a specialized, so there are three classrooms. If you walk in the main entrance to your right, there are three classrooms, there's a sensory area, there's some discreet trial area, and then to the left will be two classrooms.
Okay.
It's gonna be great.
Sounds good.
It sounds like a great plan, and I appreciate everything that was put into it. I guess I didn't realize the extent of the planning until you presented and talked about the graphs and the charts and everything that went into it. And just to follow up on what Jesse said, the transparency is so important, so that we don't get any negative feedback along the way. It sounds like this is gonna go off without a hitch, and just thanks to everyone who took part in that.
And I'll tell you, that's, a lot of the teachers did a lot of the legwork around gathering feedback from their colleagues, which I think really, really helped.
And through the chair, I was gonna ask that, you said you gathered input or whatever, like, what method that was? Was it like a survey that went out, or was it just word of mouth?
They did a lot of kind of grade-level meetings to get feedback, and then they had a Google Doc going that people were adding things into, and they also kind of served as the liaison back, so if something else came up, they came up, they could bring it back to the team.
That's good.
So, they did a lot of the legwork around that, which was really, we had pages of thought to look at.
Yeah, it was amazing, providing research.
Absolutely.
Which I love research, so I was excited.
Right.
Yeah, it was great.
That's great. Thank you to everyone involved.
Yes, thank you.
It was great.
Thanks so much. And I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Primary Configuration Team as outlined in the meeting.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Thanks again.
Thank you. I don't know if you want to tell them, they won't leave unless you tell them.
You're welcome to stay, but nothing exciting is gonna happen here tonight.
Oh, we're not gonna discuss that big pay raise for teachers tonight?
There's no 50/50 raffle, no reason to stick around.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for coming. Good night.
Have a nice night, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right, moving on.
Wanted to make you aware, Dr. Russell Johnson, he's the Senior Associate Commissioner and State Director of Special Education. He, along with a number of members of his team, at Mrs. Reedy's invitation, came and visited on the 21st, and due to time limitations, they were only able to visit Bryn Mawr School and Auburn Middle School, but they left extremely impressed at our co-teaching, our high level of inclusivity with our students. They even got to see the Bright Program over at Auburn Middle School, so it was really a great all-around day, so just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you.
Another nice event Dr. Chamberlain and I were able to recently attend this past Thursday was Auburn Middle School's National Junior Honor Society induction ceremony. Always a great night. They inducted 37th graders and 13 8th graders. And I will tell you, the officers, who are all 8th grade students, did a tremendous job. They really lead the program by and large and did just a super job, so really professionally done, start to finish.
Even the program was...
Wasn't it?
Wasn't it done by the...
Yeah, it was, by the, yeah, the publications person, exactly. Did want to let you know, so Governor Baker's proposed FY 2021 budget came out, noting Chapter 70 money, and really pleased to share that the Auburn Public Schools, per the governor's budget, which is typically the lowest of the three, at least historically has been, shows an increase of $419,096. But important to note is the Student Opportunity Act, and I included in your packet a memo that came out actually in late November from Commissioner Riley regarding the Student Opportunity Act. And Dr. Chamberlain and I were at the Superintendent Midwinter Conference this past Thursday, and at that, the commissioner shared some additional information regarding expectations. So, any community who receives $1.5 million or less, so that's Auburn, would need to fill out what they're calling the short form. We need to come up with a plan, and it's due to the commissioner by beginning of April, that shows what we're gonna do with the additional monies that came through the SOA, Student Opportunity Act, and how it's gonna positively impact student and student achievement. So, they are intending to share with us superintendent's, a template, it is not yet out, I think he was promising maybe later this week. They're gonna hold a webinar upcoming, but there is ties to it. And important to note, and I know I've shared with you in the past, 35 communities are getting the large bulk, 80-plus percent of these additional monies, for communities that were really impoverished and really below the poverty level in terms of supporting students. So, but I was thrilled to see, and when we were at the conference last week and talking with superintendent colleagues, many of them received the bare minimum, which is just either $10 or $20 per student allotment. So, Auburn, again, has gotten a nice sum of money, and actually, Mrs. Worzicki and Dr. Chamberlain and I meet with town manager Jared Jacobson and CFO Kesson Ovitz tomorrow for our first pass-through and discussion about the budget. So, we'll keep you apprised of what that means, and as more information comes out about the SOA plan, we'll share that with you, too, but it seemed it's a bit still in the development, I would say, but it is a requirement of the law.
So, not even an inkling as to what the criteria might be on that?
No, I think, you know, what he had indicated last week is to really try and show a nexus between this additional monies and some need in your district that you're trying to solve or tackle. He did indicate that he fully understands that particularly in communities as ours, regional agreements work differently, that because we get additional Chapter 70 money in some communities, may not mean that the schools actually benefit from that. So, he's tried to leave some leeway in there and flexibility, and he kept emphasizing it's a requirement of the law, but they're trying to make it as common-sense approach as possible. But no, I really don't have much more beyond that.
Interesting.
Yeah, it will be.
One question, if I could. I know a lot of it was on low-income families and students. Are we gonna judge our low-income population based on free and reduced lunch, or do we have some other guidelines we're gonna go by?
So, Desi actually sets those criteria, and it's changed over the years. That's actually one of the metrics that they're really looking at carefully, the low-income census data. So, I'm not sure, quite honestly, because they had shifted to economically disadvantaged, I'm not really sure that they've got it all resolved quite yet. He did share with us, and I, he didn't get a chance to show his whole presentation, but we received a copy of it via email today. So, I really haven't looked carefully at it, but waiting to see what these templates look like that get shared, listen to a webinar that we'll participate in, and then share it back, share it back with all of you.
Thank you.
The interesting part is that when you're doing well as a school district, and you have to come up with what could be considered challenges, that is the challenge.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
All right, I can't wait to hear about that. And we now move on to unfinished business.
So, I don't have any update for you, other than what I just recorded on the draft budget. I will share, as I think I mentioned last week, we meet with the AEA for our regular meeting that'll take place on Wednesday, so we'll share with them some draft calendars and then hope to bring a recommended calendar to you at a February meeting. And then I know I had mentioned it previously, Auburn's Citizens Leadership Academy, this is a goal area of Town Manager Jacobson, so the school is slated to do their presentation on April 16th, and it is open for members of the community if they are interested in participating, and it's all available online at the town's website, if anyone's interested in signing up.
All right. We now move on to new business.
So, it is my recommendation, I know that we have February 5th, it's gonna be dedicated for the interviews for candidates for the new superintendent, who will take over July 1st. So, it is my recommendation that we add a meeting on February 26th, because the next scheduled one after that is not until March 11th, and it feels like a long period of time. And then you'd also need to decide as a committee what time you'd like that meeting to take place, start, I should say.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to add a school committee meeting on Wednesday, February 26th.
Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
And discussion on any part of that or start time?
Is this for the 5th or the 26th?
The 26th.
Are we going to have staff presenting anything?
We have, actually, we've invited Leah McDonald, who was at 351, Representative, who will be coming. We have Mr. Bonaccio, and I believe it's Mrs. Fisher, I may be wrong, coming to present regarding 365Z at the high school and the program of studies we're hoping to bring for the high school as well. And that really is not a presentation, so we do have some staff and students coming.
And that's the 26th?
The 26th, yes.
I can do six, sir.
I could do six.
Six, yeah.
Sure?
Okay. 6:00 PM it is. Is that all right with you?
It's perfect. And we'll get that posted on the website and notify people.
Do we have a time for February 5th? That we're gonna...
So through the chair, it's a decision of the committee. It's currently noted on the website as a 7:00, just a regular meeting, but it's up to you, the time you want to do.
Earlier, if it's good.
I could do earlier on the 25th as well?
The 5th?
The 5th.
February 5th? Okay.
Next week.
6:00 o'clock, too early, or?
Can we do 6:15?
6:30?
Yeah, let's do 6:30.
Okay, so February 5th, 6:30, and that'd be here?
Yes.
And February 26th, that's 6:00, and that'll be here?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote.
And I did just want to reiterate what Ally said. I was not able to stay for the whole time, but it really is so impressive what they do, the We the People program. And not only when they do their presentations, and the judges were really complimentary to them, but then the judges get to ask any question related to the topic that they want and really push the kids to bring in not only historical references, but contemporary issues that really tie to it. So it really is great. And as I talked to some of the parents up in the hallway afterwards, they said how stressed they were. And I said, "I know, I know." So it was great. Really, really well done.
That's quite the opportunity. How long has that been going on?
So I feel as though this program has maybe been in Auburn six or seven years. Somewhere in there. And Mr. Kennard, he was a student, I believe, who grew up down in Chatham, at Chatham High School. And they had a We the People program there, and he was part of it.
Oh.
And so he brought it here. But it's been at least six years, because I remember originally it was at the, right on the Harvard main campus that it was held, at least for a couple of years. And now it's at the Edward M. Kennedy Institute and things, a little easier to get to and things. But great program. The kids all looked great. When I walked in, it was a sea of blue and black. You know, the kids were all dressed really sharp.
So professional.
Oh, it was great.
Yeah, the pictures on Facebook, they had like a team photo.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was great.
Now, I know we've made donations in the past, but was that only when they went to Washington, DC?
So through the chair, yes. And so they placed third this year. But I did hear, I don't know if there's any possibility of this, so the first team or two has gone down. I know in the past Auburn has been invited in on a wild card, for some reason. I don't remember the specifics about, but currently now they're not going to DC. But that was when the, and they would raise $50,000 in a relatively short period of time for that.
Wow.
Yeah.
I didn't realize it was that much.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
They have the, so I sent letters of congrat, well, I wrote them today to them, so they'll get them tomorrow or Wednesday. And looking in the book, the Auburn team had the most students participating on it. It is great.
Yeah, that is awesome.
Really great.
No wonder people want to move to Auburn.
That's right.
All right. Your upcoming events?
So the preschool, as we had shared, on February 6th, for individuals registering preschool or kindergarten students. And with the flu going around, I think people are pleased that we are gonna have February vacations this year.
Yeah.
Get some rest.
Well, I hope they enjoy it just as much when they're in the classroom in July.
No.
Or approaching July.
No, and remember, our classrooms are air-conditioned, Mr. Scobie.
I know, I know.
Those days of teaching in those hot rooms are gone.
I like it on the other end, that's all. We now move on to teaching and learning?
Yes, I'd like to share with you, Auburn High School was awarded a grant in the amount of $9,000 focused on financial literacy. So this was something that came through from DESI. Mr. Handfield worked with Mrs. LeBeau at the high school to draft this grant. Based on the changing standards that have come through and with the increased emphasis on civic-based learning, there's now a pretty significant piece of financial literacy within there. And what they're hoping to do with this grant is to look to embed some teaching and learning on financial literacy as embedded through American history. So for instance, to talk a bit about what led to the Depression financially, right, in a more specific way. How that impacted mortgages, and then to take it a step further up to today. So what does a mortgage look like today, and what might you pay, and how do you figure the interest rate? So to make some connections between history, but to make them real life, and talk about how you interact with the banks and how they influence, how that impacts you and your credit card statement and whatever it might be. And that's gonna require the, DESI now has some great resources around financial literacy for students. So they're gonna pull in some of that information into the history curriculum. And they're also looking to perhaps embed something that all students will get a taste of, related to financial literacy. That might be an extension of this particular piece, but they really are tying it to the history curriculum that all students will experience anyway. So they're very excited about it. The teachers are very enthusiastic. And we were pleasantly pleased at the amount of money that was awarded. So some of that will be used to pay the staff the stipends to do it, but will also allow us to purchase materials, apps, those kinds of things that might support all of that. So very excited.
Sounds interesting.
Through the chair, anything on credit cards? So I know credit cards...
They hope that they're gonna build some of that in, right? So some of it's gonna be through that historical perspective, but then they're also hoping to provide some... Okay, what does that mean today, around that? So, yes. And then March 13th is our next full professional development day. And we've taken kind of a cue from the focus that the district has placed on the social and emotional well-being of our students to tie that to our staff. So it's going to be taking care of yourself is important to take care of others. So I've had a huge outpouring from staff with offerings like origami. There's going to be a stair-stepping challenge throughout the day with tracking some of that. We have someone doing a session on just good reads, that they like to read in their spare time, and kind of how you would get a book club going. Someone else is going to do a minor cooking little thing that folks can take. We have volleyball. They'd like to do, oh God, I'm not gonna remember. When you use the frisbee, frisbee golf, and do something around that. And we've also partnered with Reliant Healthcare, which is one of the providers of our health insurance. And for a pretty nominal fee, they're going to come in, they have some great programming around chair yoga, what your grip strength means. They can do a screening around, like a skin cancer screening. We're going to be hopefully tapping our nurses to do some blood pressure screening. We have the fire department coming to do some work, with the police department's coming. So really focused, and I'm hoping to get some banks to come in around financial wellness, right? There are a lot of things that go along with wellness, not just your physical well-being, growth mindset. So the outpouring from staff has been extremely enthusiastic and positive. It'll still be set up as it has been in the past with different sessions. So you'll sign up for a couple of things, and then I'm hoping to have kind of an open session for all the screening pieces. But really just to let staff know that we need to take care of one another, and we need to take care of ourselves, and hoping that this sets a really good tone for that. And so far, the feedback's been great.
It sounds great.
If you need help with blood pressures, let me know. Chair, I mean, my husband works for Dell in corporate America. This is what they do all the time. Those people are dealing with telephones and computers. I mean, our people are dealing with kids and everyday struggles, so I think this is great.
Part of the idea came, my husband works for a company, and they had this big van come that did eye, you know, screened for eyeglasses. And they did a, you know, right there, van pulled up. He ordered this beautiful pair of glasses at work that day, you know? I'm like, "Oh, that's kind of nice." So hopefully some of those things for the staff. So we're very excited about it. And I was a little nervous sending it out, like, you know, you have a party and nobody comes. The outcome has been great, so I think it's going to be very well-received.
What about, like, food shots? Can you tie that in?
Too late?
Yeah, I think it'll be too late, because this'll be the middle of March. So I think it'll be a little bit late for that. But really some good things, I think. Like, I didn't know that there was a screening about how strong your hands are, and that can indicate that there might be some underlying health things. And she said they make it kind of into a little competition, and people get a little bit, you know, ramped up wanting to win. So I think it'll be fun. I think it'll be fun.
I don't think we need to add shots to a fun day like this. Not that kind of anyway. Yeah. I can't wait to get a shot. It's gonna be so relaxing.
No, but through the chair, the Board of Health has outreach and has made a couple available that staff can go up at no cost, just with their insurance card. So some have...
I went. I went up in the town hall.
Yeah, so they did welcome us, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you just went in an audience when you got your shot?
Yeah.
I can't wait to hear how it turns out. It sounds like it's gonna be great. Any other comments or questions? No? Feel free to join the professional day if you get the time.
That's right. Stop it. Oh, it'll be great. It's gonna be a lot of fun.
All right. Did you want to do this before, move on to business or financial?
Yes, if we could. So at your seat, I wanted to make you aware that we received, the high school, I should say, the Gaming Video Club received a $500 donation from Webster Square Tire and Auto Service to help purchase shirts for the club. So this is a new club that is working. So it is my recommended motion that you accept it with gratitude. And Mr. Handfield or the game club advisor will be sending a note of thanks.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to accept with gratitude the donation of $500 to the Gaming Video Club to purchase shirts with donation being made by Webster Square Tire and Auto Service.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
That was really nice of them.
Yeah, very. That's great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote.
It was a dad from, yeah, a dad from the club.
Okay.
That's great.
And I had no idea there even was a gaming video club.
This is, through the chair, this is new this year, but it's been loosely working last year. But some kids had tremendous interest in it at the high school, so.
Are they games or just playing?
I think playing, though, quite honestly, because it's...
Competitively playing.
Exactly, competitively, yeah.
Other schools compete as well.
Through the chair, they call it esports. I learned that this year. And they actually, colleges now provide scholarship for that.
They do.
Really?
Yeah.
Don't tell us on that.
Yes.
I'm keeping that for my kids as well.
Through the chair, what staff members advise?
So I think there are a couple of them that are doing it. It's, and through the AEA, you do it for a couple of years without payment, to see if there's interest in it. So I would suspect that the next opening of the AEA contract, it would probably come forward. So Mr. LaJoy, I know, is involved. Mr. Blackwood has been. I don't know if he is, or maybe even Mr. Galicia. But there's a few of them that are doing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just another great way to connect with some of those kids that we wouldn't necessarily be doing the music or the art thing or the sports. It's hard to find, it's hard to find clubs like that. It's great. Fully supportive of them. Unless it's at my house, I'm not supportive. Now we move on to everyone's favorite time of the evening, business and financial.
Good evening, everyone. I provided in your packet a year-to-date budget report dated January 23rd for your review. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions if you have any. Seeing none, I will, I've also provided a budget transfer document with several transfers within the same series, and one being between a different series for your information and approval. So I ask for your support.
I would entertain that motion.
Make a motion to approve the transfers between the series as provided by the business manager?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote.
I also included in your packet a memo pertaining to a public records request that I've received from Michael Sacone, a reporter from Boston 25 News. He's looking to do a story on school loan debt. And he reached out for information on Auburn's, a couple of things that he was looking for was Auburn's current student population, the amount we currently have for student debt in Auburn, and how if someone was interested, that they would go about helping to assist in paying off some of the student debt. I provided the information, but I wanted to give you, keep you updated because of when the story does air, you know, air, that you would know how we responded. So that was the reason for the memo.
Thank you.
And then finally, the bus applications have been shared with our families via one-call emails. And hard copies will be sent home in the coming weeks. The registration deadline, as I mentioned last time, remains as June 1st, 2020. And the fee is still $100 per child if they're required to pay with a $250 cap. I do want to stress again, as I do each year, but it's very important that everybody, no matter if they have to pay a fee or not, that they all fill out a registration form, because it's really important. We need to have registrations for each child that will ride the bus, whether they do pay or not. So when anybody that has it in prior to June 1st, or it's postmarked June 1st or before, they will not have to pay the full fee, so. Okay?
Excellent. Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
And we now move on to policies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So there are five policies. The first, these came out from MASCE. The first one, JBB, it is my recommendation that you approve on first reading. And the other four, as you can see via track changes, have varying degrees of alterations. These in line with MASCE's recommendation. So I do recommend your approval of all.
I would entertain a motion to approve all of those changes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. There's a vote. And do we need an executive session?
A very brief one, yes, please.
A very brief executive session. So I would entertain that motion.
I will make a motion for Mass General Law, Chapter 30, Section 2182, to conduct strategies for negotiations with union and non-union personnel in executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mrs. Haraway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Scobie?
Yes. Great. There is a vote. Good night, everyone.